I'd like to welcome you to the Singlets County Planning Commission's virtual public hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting in early December. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners and their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then members of the public will be able to speak. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions in points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a survey will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, or with concern regarding tonight's petition. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 28-21 Jama West Properties LLC.
Good evening. This is PC 28-21 Jama West Properties LLC. It's a request for a change in zoning from M3 NU and FPNU to C8 and FPC8 for a 6.19 acre tract of land on the south side of Manchester Road, approximately 260 feet west of Dietrich Road. From the county count and text map, you can see this site is in West County, and there is the site outlined in red. There is mostly retail development along Manchester with an industrial office park to the north of the site. There are also single and multifamily residences off Manchester Road on either side, and there is retail and residential development in the city of town and country to the northeast. Here is the second aerial view of the site. This is on the site in sort of the middle of the site, looking south where the public's hearing sign was posted. This is looking east down Manchester Road. Now we're looking west down Manchester Road. This is looking north at the office building across Manchester from the site. We are still looking north across Manchester. This is in the eastern corner of the site where there's an internal drive leading to what's currently RV storage at the rear of the site. Now we're looking southeast, and you can see the back of the neighboring convenience store. We're now looking south at the rear of the site. This is looking west, still at the rear of the site. We're now behind the fence that you saw in the previous picture. Looking north on the western portion of the site. Still looking north, this is the rear of the existing building that's on the site. And this is the front of that existing structure, so we're looking southwest. And this is standing in the middle of the site, looking east at the neighboring gas station. And finally, this is the southeast corner of the property.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Mr. Dufour, do you have the PowerPoint, or does Mr. Vance have it?
We have the PowerPoint here. And Dave Lincoln, Dave Sinclair, Lincoln is here with me, so I think we're probably good to go.
Yeah, so you want to put the PowerPoint up? Let's see, or...
I'm going to make you the presenter, Skip, so you can share your screen. You should be able to share your screen now. If you click the share button along the bottom bar and then choose PowerPoint or whatever app you have, the presentation in. It's coming up now.
Yeah. Ready?
If you just make it full screen presentation mode. Actually, I think that top, in the top orange bar, there's like a little screen pull-down with a play sign in it, sort of where the save icon is. There's a two... No, on the other side, two over from, or three over from the save icon.
Auto save, okay.
The next one to the right, yeah, that one.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Skip Dufour. I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant Jama West Properties LLC. They are the purchaser under contract. Bad Realty LLC is the owner of the property. And actually, it's a joint representation because I actually represent both entities. With me tonight is Dave Zeiser, who is with Dave Sinclair Lincoln, and he may be able to provide answers to questions more so than I, depending upon what's being asked. But without repeating the introductory comments, in essence, this property does consist of two legal parcels, but it's being treated as one for our zoning purposes. One is a little under five acres, and the other one is about 1.2 acres, round numbers. And this property has probably since, I don't know, the sixties, been operated as a used car location under a grandfathering clause. Tonight, of course, we're asking for a zoning of C8 and FPC8 to allow the proposed use for sales, rental, and leasing of new and used vehicles, autos, trucks, trailers, related uses. The concept that you see in front of you is the new Lincoln vitrine concept. And as the slide indicates, vitrine is a glass word that means glass jewel. Lincoln, there is no Lincoln dealership here in West County. I think Mr. Sinclair is the franchised owner of the Lincoln locations, and the only other one that exists of Mr. James Sinclair is the one in St. Peters. So the introduction of a Lincoln dealership in West County on Manchester would be new to the area. As you know, there are other high-end automobile dealerships located in the vicinity. There's Lexus, Acura. So this concept here, what you see in front of you is actually Lincoln's design. It has a glass front. The building is about 30 foot high, and it contains, in round numbers, about 6,300 square feet, consisting of the administrative offices, customer lounge, sales area. What you see is service there on the left is actually a, in essence, a glass garage door. People will drive in and put their car for service. There'll be a service tech inside there, and, but the cars will be taken to another location for service. There will not actually be service repair work done on-site. I'm going to ask Dave to switch to the, go ahead.
And so Lincoln, one of the big advantages of purchasing a Lincoln is, is we do pickup and delivery. So if you purchase a Lincoln, we go to your house, drop off a new Lincoln for you to drive, and then we take yours in to get it repaired or oil changed or whatever it needs. And then when it's finished, then we bring it back to you and then pick up our vehicle. So this is just a dropping off point. We have, again, two locations that we can service the vehicles, one in St. Charles and one in South County. So depends on where. So if you've, or you can bring the car in to this service drive-through and drop the car off, pick up a loner Lincoln and go on your way. And we can, when it's finished, you can either come back, or we'll go ahead and deliver the other car to you and bring our car back.
So it's a high-end, highly customized, individualized service. That is the thrust of Lincoln's new concept for sales, delivery, repair, and servicing of vehicles and the treatment of their customers. All of the existing improvements on the property will be removed. So what you see will be a brand-new facility there. Let's switch, I guess, and go to the floor plan if we will, Dave. All right, there's a site plan, but we can look at the site plan just a second. The, the, the area that's in gray, the building, of course, is in brown. The area that's in gray will be the asphalt area for parking spaces and inventory. And as you know, a portion of the property is in floodplain and in floodway. The future uses of the property, the, to the left or to the, as you look at it, to the east, that will be used for, initially for outdoor storage. But, you know, we anticipate having related uses of that portion of the property as well. You can see that there's three curb cuts. There's about a, I guess, a 29-foot curb cut to the west. There's a 60-foot curb cut to the middle, and the parcel number two, the 1.2 acre parcel, has a 25-foot curb cut, which will be used for delivery of vehicles in circulation to the rear of the property with incoming trucks and vehicles, and will circulate also around to the east side of the, I'm sorry, to the west side of the building for circulation of traffic on the site. I don't know, can answer questions about the site plan? But it's, as I said, it's around 6,300 square foot, one-story building, 30 foot high. Very contemporary use and look to it. Then, Dave, let's go to the floor plan, so.
One, one big thing about the vitrine is it's like a glass toolbox. So actually, everything that you're going to see is all glass in there. And if you noticed, well, let's go to the floor, excuse me, here. As you're going to see, as far as the showroom, that's the, the two cars there. They're in a row, and you're going to see the black or the gray around it is just the tile. So actually, when you look in, you're going to actually see throughout the building because even the black label room and the sales pavilions are all glass. And you'll actually see from one end to the next, and even actually then to the delivery center that's behind it. Even as far as in the front of it, if you notice there, we've got a, one car there in the front. It's a, it's actually like a patio, and you'll see the vestibule to the right, and that's going to be glass doors because of COVID and so on like that. So no one has to touch a door to open it. And, but you're going to see, everything is open up in this whole building. As you bring your car into the drive-through, you're going to see our craftsmen's desk, and that's where you would go inside there and, you know, write up your service repair order and so on like that. But again, that's all glass on each side. So when you look through there, you're going to be looking through the craftsmen's office and into the customer lounge. But everything is all glass and open. So we'll have to keep clean desks.
Except for the restrooms.
Except for the restrooms.
I think, you know, for the presentation that we wanted to make this evening, we'll probably hit the highlights of what we wanted to cover here. So I think we'll conclude, see if there's any comments from the Commission or questions from the public.
Okay. But we thank you. Commissioners, any questions? They're at one time. Gary?
Yes. I have one. I thought I was unmuted, but I'm not. I wasn't. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, lights. Do you plan on having any lighting or signage? The, the signage where it says dealer wall, there, okay.
So here's, your signage on the building here is actually on the building itself. As you notice that they've got a dealer wall, so our, the dealership name will be right here. And, and that's the only name of the dealership that's on it there. Mr. Sinclair is crazy about that, but it's the train we have to keep into their standards. The word service here is hang-down letters. Those letters are only about two to three feet in size. You've got your Lincoln logo to the left, and then the word Lincoln itself is hung. They're actually individual letters. They're not attached, they're only attached at the top, and they hang down with the word Lincoln. I haven't seen, we assume that these are lit up here, but that's the only signage that's on the building. There's nothing like the cross with the name. It's just what's on here in the dealer wall, which is right here.
So there's nothing outside, no poles, signage, or any...
There was, yeah, there will be a, there is a monument sign, Lincoln brand sign. Let's go to the site plan. Okay, yeah. In the green area there, Mr. Elliott, I think that's your question. There's, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard. Lincoln brand sign is on the, as you face it, the right-hand green area to the, mostly to the, I'm sorry, to the, to the east. And that's, that will look like, let's go back to the... It'll look like what's on the left side of the service drive-through. It'll be a brown stand-like and with the Lincoln logo there. And, but it won't be any higher than the building. It's 30.
It'll, it'll be that way both sides, you know, so you can see it going east or west on Manchester, but it won't have any writing on it. It'll just have the logo.
Okay.
It might say Lincoln at the, yeah, it says Lincoln at the bottom, but small letters. Nothing real big.
Do people have to call for appointment if they're going to drop their car off?
No, they can drop their car off. Well, we do buy, well, let's say that if there was an emergency or, you know, you have a problem, as you bring it in, but actually, we have appointments. We do everything by appointment so that we can have a car ready for them for pickup. That's the biggest advantage.
Okay, so the lacking of stacking wouldn't be a problem, doesn't sound like, if you, they call in for a...
Oh, no, we won't have a stacking problem. No.
Are you going to require any fencing or anything like that around your building or your property?
Right now, we do not have anything written about fencing and so on like that. I don't think that, our other dealerships currently have no fencing on them. And or, but no, as far as the back, there's no way getting out of the property. And then the building, there's a building, American Cleaners on the left side. That would be the east side that's there. So no, right now, we don't, and I don't know if we have plans on it, but the cleaner's on the right. Yeah, cleaners are, yeah, over here, so, yeah, of the gas station.
The gas station. Now, you said that's going to be a new building altogether. Do you have to make any, you anticipate making any ground improvements or anything like that?
Well, cleaning up the facility is going to be a big one there because we'll be cleaning up the whole parcel, parcel one and two, which there's a lot of stuff that seems to be in parcel two in the back. So all that will be removed. There is the, there is a mobile home office that's there, well, that will be removed. The current building will be, there will be taken down. So everything will be very clean. We have landscaping in, in the front. There's a, in, in the front, they're in front of the building, but everything is kind of will be clean and...
Mr. Ballard, there's a Zen Garden that shows from the site plan, Z E N Garden, which is, as you look at that rendering there, it's, it's, it's right by the, the Dave Lincoln signage. And that's also a requirement of Lincoln, and I'll let Dave Zeiser explain to you what the Zen Garden is.
What a Zen Garden is.
Okay, you have the inside of the building up right now, I'm looking at on my side. I see the inside.
Well, the, well, if you look at there, you'll see on the showroom, the, the two cars that are there on the showroom, in front of that, that's the outside, is called the Zen Garden. So as you, what the Zen Garden is, it's, it's actually, Lincoln wants people to feel relaxed when they come in. It's in, the, the stones will represent that calmness, and it goes back tradition. I think it's an Oriental...
It is.
...way of relaxation that they have. So Lincoln has gone that this way to give that, you know, to give this whole thing a relaxing atmosphere when you come in. Matter of fact, if you notice there on the showroom, you're going to see, again, the black label room and sales pavilion there. Those are rooms there that look like a living room, and actually, people will come in when they're going to look at a car so that they can sit down and the salesperson can go ahead and go over the car, find out what their needs are, in, in more of a relaxed atmosphere. And then there'll be screens up so they can pick colors and things like that.
Big television screen so you can make your options, choices, and see that. And we're hoping everybody be relaxed with the Zen Garden and not pick up the stones and throw them through our glass windows.
You may get them in anyone.
But this is, this is all Lincoln's requirements. And I guess where they have had these underway, they're considered very successful and met with a lot of customer acceptance.
Okay, well, thank you. That's all my question. Appreciate your answering, though.
Okay, any other commissioners? Ventori, will you help on-site?
Well, actually, as, as normally, we would carry at our other Lincoln stores anywhere from, let's say, 60 to 120 vehicles. But right now, because of the chip shortage, like right now, each store, Lincoln stores have about 15 or 20 in stock. Lincoln feels that, that we're going to go more of an ordering system with these new facilities. We do probably about 20, 30% of our purchasing where people don't even come into the dealership, where we actually do everything online. The customer can actually see the cars we have and fill out credit apps. Then it all gets scored, and then we basically then will take a vehicle to their house. We'll actually then test drive it overnight. We bring their, their trade-in in so we know what their value is. And then we set it up, they sign everything by docket sign as we bring the car back to them.
And Lincoln's incentivizing people to, to buy online by providing rebates for purchases through that medium as opposed to necessarily coming in and shopping around the traditional way that all of us are used to buying a car.
Now, will your other dealership go into the same format, St. Charles, South County?
Actually, South County will actually be just a repair facility. So it won't be going through a renovation, but the store in St. Peters will be, and it'll be almost identical. That store's a remodel because it already has a showroom, but if I showed you the St. Peters front and floor plan, it will be very, almost identical to it. And our main inventory for that store there, all our vehicles will be brought to the South County store and get them prepped and so on. And so that's where the storage will be. We'll bring the cars out there when they're finished. So we won't have big inventories there. They'll be there at the facility down in South County, and then when we need...
So you're not going to do any sales in South County, eventually?
Eventually, correct.
No sales, okay. What are you just going to be doing, storing vehicles?
And repairing the vehicles there. So as we have pickup and delivery, we'll, I would assume that if the vehicle is, somebody lives in St. Charles area, we'll just take it to the St. Peter's store. But if it's anywhere, I guess, south of 40, in that area there, they will all be taking the South County.
Okay. Okay, Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Hillsinger, may I, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Dufour and Mr. Sinclair, we do have a, we have a petition immediately following yours for a, it's across the street from this location and also for car sales. You, would you, would you say that you are not in any way attached to the, to the following petition? I just want to ensure that there's no, that you are not a part in any way, shape, or form of the next petition.
We are not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Didn't even know about it until I saw it on the docket tonight.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Mel, you want to see if anyone would like to speak?
Sure, so if anyone is here to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name. Sure, so if anyone is here to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the petitioner list. Uh, the button might also be in the bottom right hand corner of your screen. Um, you may need to open the. Petitioner list, the uh participant list in order to see your name. But I don't, I don't see anyone at this point.
Okay. Okay, seeing no one, uh, this will conclude this petition and we thank both of you.
All right, thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to PC twenty-nine dash twenty-one K two M Properties LLC.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, this is PC twenty-nine dash twenty-one K two M Properties LLC. Um, there's a request for a change in zoning from M three and floodplain M three to C eight and floodplain C eight uh for a tract. Uh, three point six acres in size and located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Manchester Road and Consort Drive. And as uh Jacob mentioned, it is directly across uh Manchester Road from the, the petition you just heard. Uh, and the. Sort of surrounding land uses and further north along Manchester is a office industrial park. Um, there's some residential and a, a church and school um to the northeast and then commercial uh along Manchester Road and then the town and country. Uh, municipal boundary is, is to the east of the site. Uh, this view is uh zoomed in aerial. You can see the existing uh office building structure uh and the, the parking surrounding the building. Uh, so, so looking, if you're standing on the, the previous petition site, looking across Manchester Road towards uh this, the subject site for this petition, you can see the sign. It's kind of fallen down there a little bit, but the, the public hearing notice sign is there. And then this is standing in the parking lot, looking uh towards the existing building. And then if you just turn around, look back towards Manchester Road, uh, and then that's also uh the intersection um Consort Drive. And then this is looking across Consort Drive uh towards the uh Bank of America. And then if you turn around and look east across the parking lot, Manchester Road is, is on the south side of the photo there. And then this uh view is looking south across Manchester Road and towards the gas station and the dry cleaner. And then this view is looking northwest along the, the northern boundary of the site. And this is the same direction, just a little bit further north, and you can see the, the curb cut to Consort Drive uh at this location. And then this view is looking north along Consort Drive towards that office uh industrial park. And then this view would be uh directly across Consort Drive. And then this view is, you just turn around and, and look back towards the site. And then this final view is looking uh south again, um, towards Manchester Road along Consort, Consort Drive. You can see that curb cut and parking for the Bank of America we saw earlier. And I believe the petitioner has a presentation at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Timko, do you have the PowerPoint?
I do. I have it up.
I'm making you the presenter now and you'll just have to click the share button at, at the bottom bar and then click PowerPoint or whichever application you have the presentation in. It's coming up.
Okay, and. Let's do the slideshow. Okay, all right, does that look great? Okay, thank you all for uh taking the time to consider our petition tonight. Um, my name is Carrie Timko and I am. At the attorney for the owner of the property, K two M Properties. I also have Jason Elder on tonight who manages the property and. Mike, I hope I pronounce your name correct, last name correctly, but Mike Monderhead of Terra Design Solutions, who's the engineer who drafted the site plan that's in front of you tonight. A little bit of background on the building, it was constructed in nineteen seventy-four. It was purchased by K two M Properties in March of twenty twenty-one and when K two M took over. Um, they had addressed years of deferred maintenance. You can just see from the pictures that are, are right there, just the, the vast improvement between the, the top picture and the bottom picture. The bottom picture is how it currently looks. Um, the, this is, uh, the owner of this property is run by Kurt Monganass, who also owns St. Louis Acura, who, which is right down the street. Um, you'll see some more photos in a few slides. Um, but ge- generally, the building's used for medical and office space and it's currently zoned M three F P M three. Okay, the proposed use is to generally maintain it operating as it always has as office and medical space. Um, we're asking for a change to C eight F P C eight and the proposed change in zoning is required so that um. Mr. Monganass can operate would essentially be a satellite location for St. Louis Acura out of just one of the suites that's in the building. And it'll be located right where that red arrow is, which is suite eight. The plans did have approximately thirty-five cars on this site for viewing. And there would be one to two employees of St. Louis Acura present to answer phones, greet customers and show the cars that are being kept at this location. Then if an interest in a car develops into a sale, the car and the customer will be escorted down to St. Louis Acura down the street to complete the purchase. Okay, you'll see there in this slide, the site plan for the building of key importance here is that there are not going to be any changes to the building. Um, for this business to be run. The site plan that you've been provided shows a lot in the building exactly as it is now. And because there's no proposed construction on the property, there's not going to be any impact on the floodplain since this is also labeled as in a floodplain area as well. Um, because it is labeled as a floodplain zone, we did contact uh MSD and the Department of Transportation. You'll see from the emails that are posted on that slide that there was no problem with the fact that this uh property is in a floodplain with the proposed use or the rezoning. And we also confirmed with the Department of Transportation that a floodplain study would not be required um for purposes of rezoning. Because we're proposing to use this existing property as a um part of an auto dealership, um obviously parking is probably of paramount importance. For this particular piece of property, there's a, there would be a required eighty-four spaces. Currently, there's a hundred and forty-one spaces on site, so there's currently fifty-seven additional parking spaces. Uh, the proposed business would only be using thirty-five parking spaces at most. So even if the business is being operated out of this location, there would still be twenty-two extra parking spaces over and above what would be required for this property. Uh, the proposed business will have a minimum impact on the existing tenants and the neighboring properties. The area where this property is located, as you can see on this map here, and as you've seen with the other presentation, is commercial. There is no residential directly abutting this property. I know that there's some a little bit um off to the side, but none directly abutting this property. The property is already being used for commercial purposes, so there's already customers, patients, vendors coming in and out of the lot on a daily basis. And of course, as we just discussed, there are other car dealerships along this street and obviously um one that's directly across the street that. Must be changing hands soon. Um, and moreover, this isn't going to be used as a typical car dealership as, as we know it, it's going to be a satellite office, so it's gonna be on a much smaller scale. Um, the signage isn't going to change. The existing sign is going to be used uh that's located that you saw in the pictures earlier. And it's also worth noting that the area is fairly much fully developed, so it's not, there's not gonna be a likelihood that this, the use of this area is gonna change anytime in the future drastically. So the use of the property is fairly appropriate for what's around it. Um, you'll see here some of the photos of what was done to the property. As you can see, the, the property was refreshed on both the outside. You can see the exterior improvements here, um, and then some of the interior courtyard improvements as well. Um, so when K two M purchased the property, they, they really did a nice job of addressing the deferred maintenance. And just refreshing the property and keeping it in a desirable condition. And um, this obviously would extend to the operation of the proposed uh auto business as well. Here you can see some of the exterior improvements that were made. Um, a lot of the dead trees and dying trees and landscaping that was overgrown was removed. You can see in that upper right-hand corner, the pictures of the, the dead trees that were removed and in the remainder of the pictures, you can see the nice. Uh, yard area and plantings just cleaned up and, and looks a lot better than it did. And, you know, this proposed auto business, it's not a fly-by-night or let's try something out kind of a thing. It's gonna be a smaller portion of an already established, well-run automobile operation that's run by a experienced local entrepreneur. And he has a real uh commitment to quality. It's gonna be consistent at this property as it is with St. Louis uh Acura as well. And the goal is for this business to become an asset to the area rather than any kind of a hindrance. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us and between Jason, Mike and I, we'll do our best to answer any questions anyone has.
Okay, thank you. Uh, commissioners, any questions?
I'll have one.
Go ahead.
At this new site, Ms. Timko, is there gonna be a place where I guess cars, people will come there? You will have a display of cars sitting someplace?
Yes, let me go back to um. The slide that shows where the, maybe I, right here, so that this area right here that's highlighted on this slide, can you see that?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, that is the area that is proposed to be used for this business. So there'll be um along this side right here. Um, on the, the outside of the parking lot.
Okay, so they will not be able to test drive those? They'll just look at them and then go back to the other area to, they wanna test drive the car? How does that work?
Uh, that is my understanding. Jason, if you're on and you can add anything to that, Jason is the manager of the property, works for St. Louis Acura.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
So, yeah, like Carrie said, that frontage there will hold for thirty-five to up to thirty-five cars. And customers will be able to visit the site and drive cars off the lot, but any painting work or processing will be moved down the street about a mile down the street. We'll finalize any purchases.
Okay, do you plan on advertising itself at that area?
Um, more advertising than the sign front. That is up there currently, we have, and Carrie's got a slide of it. It has multiple instances listed within that. It'll be a small portion.
Okay, I got. Bill?
I guess the answer was yes, that you don't have signs, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard.
Anyone else have any questions?
He was breaking up on my side. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, he was breaking up and I didn't hear all the answer to that.
Well, I, if I may, I can add in a little bit. Um, that you asked about advertising, that there is an existing sign that's already located on the property. And that is actually not gonna be enlarged or changed. It's going to be, so it has other signage on it, but that is going to remain and, and the sign for this business will just be added to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing number, thank you. Um, Mel, you wanna see if anyone has any questions from the audience?
Yes, so if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about this petition, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. Uh, it may also be located in the very bottom rightmost corner of the screen and you may need to open the participant list in order to see your name. I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay, we have no one. Okay, uh, seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal and we appreciate you and this concludes this petition. And with that, we'll go to tonight's last petition, which is PC thirty dash twenty-one N V S Properties. Eleven LLC, I believe it is.
Good evening. Tonight we have PC uh thirty dash twenty-one N V S Properties eleven LLC requesting an amended C eight. On a one point seven three acre tract of land located in the southwest quadrant of Sulphur Spring Road and Arbor Springs Drive. Looking at the context map, you can see that our site is located in West St. Louis County, um, and you can see it in the small aerial outlined in red. Looking at the land use map, you can see that the site is um located in a relatively commercial area. Um, and surrounded by residential uses. Here's just an enlarged aerial of the site. You can see that it's a large vacant tract adjacent to um some residential properties. Um, as well as a gas station to the south and um a dry cleaner to the north. So this is looking um at the, if you're standing at the northern property line, line of the site, this is looking into the site. Um, this is if you're on um Sulphur Spring Road, looking to the interior of the site at the east. Um, this is looking, this is the southern property line of the site um from the parking lot of the service station. And this is the um western property line of the site, um, kind of back in between the site and the um neighboring subdivision. Again, here, we're at the corner of the site um at Arbor Springs Drive, um, heading back into the site. So this is looking directly across Arbor Springs Drive. You can see that there's um a dry cleaner. Across Sulphur Springs Drives is an established uh commercial area. Um, you're looking at a Dobbs Car Service Station. This is um adjacent to the site, to the south. It's a gas station with a car wash. And then this is if you're looking down Arbor Springs Drive into the subdivision. And then we have um north going northbound on Sulphur Springs Drive. And then this is the view southbound down Sulphur Springs Road. And next we have the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, do you have the PowerPoint or does Patrick?
Uh, I do.
Chris does?
Yep.
Sorry, your name hadn't quite.
Sorry, Chris.
All right, I'm making you the presenter and then you'll just need to click the share button and then PowerPoint or PDF, whatever you have the presentation in. Okay, it's coming up.
Perfect. Uh, thank you everyone for uh taking the time to uh listen to us about our potential project here at four thirty Arbor Springs. My name is Chris Horny. My name is Chris Horny. I work for a firm called Murphy Development Group out of Chicago. Um, we are a real residential and real estate developer uh primarily in the Midwest. And we're working on behalf of a uh a tenant of ours called Guide Post Montessori. It's a childcare school. They've got ninety schools across the country. Uh, and we're working on roughly fifteen of them uh at this time. Uh, they're a growing uh early childhood education school. And uh, you know, we're one of their preferred developers, so we are excited about this opportunity and about a chance to be in this area. Um, uh, with me tonight is Patrick from C E C Engineering, um our civil engineer. And uh, we also uh Global Power Construction is the, the construction firm that we work with. And there, they travel with us across the, the country, so they do this all over the place. As she said, uh, the site is of four thirty Arbor Spring Drive. Uh, it was originally a P D, a part of this entire uh neighborhood that you see just to the west and north of it. Um, as a part of that uh P D, there, there was supposed to be a childcare on the north, which is where now the Star Crest Cleaners is and a bank to the south. Uh, that, you know, obviously didn't happen, the Star Crest Cleaners had sat. Uh, one of the main reasons I would expect why this site has uh has sat for so long. It's maybe a bit difficult to see here, uh and it certainly wasn't quite obvious in the, in the pictures. Is that this site drops off considerably um from the north to the southwest. Uh, if you, if you can see here on the north side, we're at five seventy-five. And by the time you get towards the, where the gas station is, it's all the way down to five forty-five. So there's a thirty-foot drop uh on, on the site, which is perhaps why it's become so difficult to, to develop this. Uh, we're proposing a one-story building of roughly ten thousand seven hundred square feet. And that, that would house a hundred and fifty-four students. Uh, and by students, I mean zero six-year-old children um that have a, a, a class day that can start as early as seven AM and ends at six PM. Although there are no uh defined start and end times. So uh, one benefit of uh, of a daycare compared to a traditional school is you don't have a, a, a all at one time uh rush uh for people to drop off their kids. Also, you do have to park and, and, and walk your child in. Uh, you cannot just simply drop off. Um, you know, these are zero to six-year-olds. So uh, we are pulling in, parking, walking to the, the door and typically into the classroom, at least pre-COVID times. You would walk into the classroom, some of the schools, now you just drop them up or drop, walk them to the front door. You see in the green is a two large uh outdoor areas, which is quite important and also part of the licensing uh requirements. Um, each state's health department typically is uh dictating the, the code and requirements for early childhood uh education. And so we, we need a certain amount of square footage per child uh at exterior space uh to allow them to play. And although you see a lot of grade, that's okay. Uh, grade is okay in the, in that outdoor space. And we'll, we'll uh, you know, build the playgrounds sort of within that space. Um, in terms of sort of the look and feel, we have a uh, because it's in a more residential area, we do have a a residential look, uh that's a combination of uh stone, the base with uh a Hardy plank siding. And um a combination of both horizontal and shake siding, architectural shingles. The, the signage that you see uh is a, a, above the front entrance as well as we will have a small um monument sign uh near the, near the road uh that might be shown here. Patrick, I don't believe it is, but it would be right along Sulphur Springs Road.
We don't have it indicated on the current plan, Chris.
Okay, um typically about three foot high by four foot wide, not, not anything large signage is not a uh, a major concern. Typical indoor, uh interior layout looks a little like this, uh they are the, the naming of the, of the, the, the rooms is primarily just segregated by age. Uh toddlers and children's house, which is the uh three to six-year-olds. Uh, each of them have interior bathrooms as well as this gross motor area where, which has like a little rock climbing wall. And you know, when it's cold in the winter is, that's, that's their playground area. As I said, a hundred and fifty-four students uh at, at peak enrollment or max enrollment, but that, that likely takes two to three years to get to. And it is, it is run by a professional, you know, national firm and they do have uh St. Louis area schools already. Um, so this is, this is not a, they are not a new entrant into the, into the neighborhood. Uh, and tip- typical interior fit and finish of the, of the property would look something like this. Um, it's, they, they do their best to try to keep it bright, clean. Um, they actually have windows in between the classrooms so the kids can uh interact with each other. Uh, the Montessori uh education is very much one that you know, gives kids, gives kid the room to be creative and uh, you know, it's a little less hands-on and, and more create creativity-based for the kids. We do have a, a, you know, the landscaping plan that will address, there is a, a series of existing trees already. Uh, you will see that we, we do have to add a, a large landscaping or retaining well to help retain the grade uh while, while it drops off uh in that southwest corner. And other than that, I'm happy to open it up to any questions people may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, what kind of uh kitchen facilities will you have?
Catch, catchment facilities, is that what you're asking?
Kit, kitchen or cafeteria.
Facility, so we don't do any, any cooking on site. Uh, there will be a, in effect, like a staging warming kitchen, uh but all of the, all the food is prepared off-site uh by a third-party vendor. Most of the daycares do that this, at this point, just because of liability of food allergies and uh, you know, making sure that they can do it proper.
You anticipate any kind of impact from the traffic? If, if, I know you said two to three years to get to peak, but if you're talking a hundred and some students.
Um, because, because it's a two-hour morning pickup and two-hour drop-off. We really, really don't into, I mean, of course, there is going to be trafficking it out, but we do have both the uh Arbor Spring entrance as well as uh the Sulphur Spring Road entrance, uh which is, if you can compare that to uh sorry, if I can go back um to the Goddard School, uh which is just north of this. Um, it only has the one entrance. We do have, we do have more to access and egress than they do. Uh, so I think that should help uh to the extent that people need to come in, depending on if you're going north or south. We've got an opportunity to do both, right? So if you're, if you're taking a left, it might be easier to go out Arbor Spring and go that way.
Okay, anyone else?
How many parking spaces, how many parking spaces do you have for uh the parents coming in with their children?
Yep, uh, I believe it is twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, correct, Patrick?
Uh, we're at uh twenty-three right now.
Twenty-three.
I'm sorry, twenty-two, you're right, twenty-two, twenty-two, thirteen up in the front row and nine across the aisle.
Correct.
And how many staff members?
So for a school of this size, when I'm at peak, because they, again, uh it's seven AM to six PM. Uh, so those, most staff members aren't there the entire time. Um, they're there for, the, the peak is during the middle of the day. Uh, we will at most have twelve, just give me a second, I can look at the yeah, at most twelve. Um, but in the mornings, that'll be more like six. And at the evenings, it'll be more like six. Uh, and that twelve is, I would say, call it from nine to four is when you, because you have people coming in early to do the early shift. Uh, and then those folks leave early and then you have folks who are, are staying later as uh they go all the way to six.
Okay.
Where is your containment for uh all of the uh the stuff that you throw away, the kids using food and the different containment, where are they kept?
The, so the trash?
Yes.
Uh, the trash is on the north side here um in the item labeled number five here, um the trash enclosure.
So it's not creating any, 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 any need for uh water runoff, anything like that?
Patrick, can you help answer that?
So we're talking about stormwater detention now?
Yes.
Uh, stormwater detention is intended to be up front there along Sulphur Spring.
I think that's what you see here, just east of the uh parking.
Correct.
As it drops off here into a pond, if you will, a small detention pond.
Above ground, correct.
Okay, yeah, what triggered that question was you was talking about the elevation. I was wondering, you know, would you um cause that water to run elsewhere, uh different and where it's running now?
We'll, we'll collect everything generated by the building um in the parking lot and pipe either surface drain or pipe it to the, the pond in front. And then it'll be uh released into the public suburbs, either along uh Arbor Spring or Sulphur Spring. Probably Sulphur Spring.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one, Mel, you want to see if any one is wanting to speak?
Sure, so if you would like to make a comment or ask a question about this request, uh please click the raise hand button next to your name. Um, it could either be on the uh participant list or perhaps in the very bottom right most corner of the screen. Or if you don't see it, you can also um send a message in the chat and I'll be able to unmute you. Do have a couple speakers, we'll start with Jay Griffith. Jay, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Would you like me to stop sharing my screen?
So Chris, you had mentioned.
Why don't you leave the site plan up during this, Chris, if that's okay?
Okay, sorry about that, go ahead.
That's fine.
So Chris, you mentioned that you don't see a big pileup in traffic because of the um drop-off windows. But I, I would argue that parents still have to go to work at the same time. So even though the children can be dropped off in a two-hour window, most people still have the same schedule to go to work. So it feels to me that there's still going to be a traffic issue during peak times. Um, and I would also say that, I know you said you have sort of better access than Goddard. But if you've ever tried to pull onto Sulphur Springs Drive and peak times, say coming north, it is already a traffic jam because you have a lot of folks coming south, getting into that turning lane, going into the treetop shopping center. So that's already an issue for us um getting into Sulphur Spring Drives during peak times. I oftentimes have to basically play chicken with people coming down the street in order to turn on to my road. So I would argue that that traffic is definitely still going to be a major issue, especially with adding in potentially a hundred, a hundred and twenty cars a day uh coming into there. So I have a lot of concerns on the traffic side of things. Um, I also didn't hear a lot about lighting. I assume this thing's going to have to be lit up uh throughout the day and in the evening and whatnot. What, what's the lighting going to look like?
Okay, we'll, we'll have them answer that on rebuttal.
Okay.
So you have an answer for lighting on rebuttal?
Yes, yes, we'll have it address everything. Uh, quick question, while you, how is your traffic in Sulphur Springs? I know you've got some schools down the street, a couple Parkway schools.
Yeah, you know, Sulphur Springs already are, um, I, I, let me speak actually just to Arbor Spring uh in general. We already have a traffic problem, although you wouldn't assume it by looking at this plan here. Um, we already have a big problem because people are always trying to get around the lights on, uh, you know, on the intersection between Big Bend and Sulphur Springs. And they end up coming down and turning around in our neighborhood at an exorbitant rate. You would, you would be shocked how many people already come down our road. So um just on our road alone, it's, it's, it's a lot of traffic. But Sulphur Spring during, you know, rush hour is, is, well, it's always busy really, but during rush hour, it's extremely busy. And I have a lot of concerns of how that's going to affect me getting to work in the morning and coming home in the evening, having to wait. And, and I'm not even sure, to be honest with you, if you start adding in that many cars trying to pick up at the same time. I, I have a lot of concerns that you'd be able to pile them up between Big Ben Road and, and Arbor Spring um wi- within nighttime traffic. I, I really think it could be a huge issue there. Um, so something to think about, I don't know if the commission has looked at a traffic study here, but I, I really think it should be looked at.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, next will be uh Julie Drake. Julie, I've got you on here twice, you're unmuted, but I'll switch to the other one if we don't hear you. Julie? Yes.
Is it, is it double?
Yeah, it sort of is.
Be burrito, burrito?
Yes.
Hang on, we're working on it, stand by, sorry. Hello? Can you hear us folks?
Try, try now.
No.
Yeah, we can, I think it's gone.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
All right, uh, we're about a half dozen Arbor Spring homeowners, including the homeowners association board here. And we've been listening to the proposal. And, and several of us have been here since the subdivision was built nineteen ninety-three. And during that time, there have been eight or ten uh other proposals that, that didn't make it for any variety of reasons. The site development plan be put back up?
Excuse me?
To sort of what you're doing.
He wants to see our plan again, Chris.
Okay, sorry.
To sort of echo what Jay said, there, there you go. Um, we foresee that, that first of all, we're uh ourselves and the vast majority of our subdivision, which is really only twenty-eight homes, as opposed to and, and primarily the traffic and safety issues, some of what Jay mentioned. Now, in previous proposal to develop this parcel, often it was proposed to have a curb cut on Sulphur Spring Road. But it seemed like every single time the, the county planning board said that it would uh a curb cut right there. It would not be allowed in the street and the traffic. So if that's the case, then the only in and out would be on our residential street of Arbor Springs. And it, uh, I actually spoke with the, the owner of the Goddard School about their traffic situation. They have a much bigger parking lot, it's set further back. The entrance to this off Arbor Spring is maybe fifty feet from Sulphur Spring. And during peak times like Jay mentioned, you're going to have lots of cars coming and going. And so my concern is, and I don't think you could probably put up the photo that showed the street and the fence line, that's actually my house. But I foresee a great big long line of cars backed up, coming uh westbound on Sulphur Spring, backed up all the way past Arbor Spring Court, waiting to turn into the parking lot at peak times. So to me, that's a safety and a traffic issue. I also agree that with Jay that we need to have a traffic study of the current traffic as well as the proposed traffic. I have a question about the retaining wall that's on the southwest corner of this property. I, I estimate it looking at the contour lines, the, the wall will be about ten feet high. And if that's the case, then the residents whose homes are, are adjacent to that retaining wall will be looking up at the playground. will be looking up at the playground, not to mention the 20 foot height of the building. That's another issue. It wasn't mentioned in, during the discussion about what kind of fence will be for the playground. Will be a solid fence or will be a see through fence? The playground is only 10 yards from my fence line and the other homes. So that's 30 feet. And, and the landscaping plan, while there's significant vegetation there now and trees and bushes, I imagine those all be cleared away and the landscape plan showed like nine trees. You know, right now, all the vegetation in this parcel now provides a buffer from all the traffic noise on Sulphur Springs Road. Now, when that's all gone, we'll have this great big building here and dozens and dozens of kids at playtime making the noise that kids make that will end up really banging up our quality of life for the home, the five or six homes that abut this thing. So given the traffic issue, given the retaining wall issue, given the extra noise. And, oh yeah, and, and as I think I understand, it shows two, I think there are number 10 on the site development plan, shows two 24 hour lighting posts. And I would guess that the county would require to have lighting on the west side of this property, which would mean our homes will be getting a great big shot of 24 hour lighting all the time at night. Next person.
Okay, thank you.
Can you indicate your name for the record, please?
Where everyone can do smell.
Can you state your name first?
Joe Wittenmeyer.
Who spoke first?
That was Paul Novak.
Paul Novak, thank you.
You know, again, I want to mirror a lot about the traffic situation. You have so many schools up and down Sulphur Springs. And, you know, every time I see the school bus, I just imagine, you know, if that bus got in an accident, now you have a school bus full of lawyers. And, you know, as adding another school in this congested area with other schools, we're just asking for incidents, accidents to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Novak. And I have a couple things. First, he mentioned that there would never be more than like 12 employees. I think there's something wrong with the math there because you cannot have 154 students, six years and under, and 12 employees, even if every one of them is a teacher. Those ratios don't work when you're talking about incident through district. I'm pretty sure that's not, I don't know what the state law is on that, but I have never seen a preschool have ratios where you could have 12, 13 kids per teacher in that age group. So I really question the number of parking spots and the amount of staff. And you're going to have staff beyond the teachers. You've got, you're going to have a receptionist and a director there probably most of the time. You're probably going to have somebody at some point in time in the day doing food prep, even though you don't put there, somebody's got to get it ready to serve. On the food issue, again, the food waste, going to those dumpsters, the smell, will they bring in animals, varmints in, you know, rodents and that kind of thing into the neighborhood? And will we be seeing food delivery trucks coming and going a couple of times every single day? Will those be coming in early in the morning? Like, how early in the morning, how disruptive will that be? Another issue I see with the students, the elementary and middle school aged students in the neighborhood. So the middle school kids have to walk down to the intersection of Arbor and Sulphur Springs. That means they walk by this entrance during drop off time. The buses, I think, I forget what time the middle school starts, eight, something. So the bus is picking them up before eight, right smack dab in the middle, high, high traffic time. They've got to walk down there, pass this entrance, pass through all this traffic. I can also see people coming into our subdivision, turning around in the cul-de-sac and lining up on Arbor Springs to make a turn in if traffic gets congested. That means they're driving through while our elementary schools are heading up to the little intersection of our two cul-de-sac streets, which is where that bus stop is. But now you've got these people driving up while we got elementary students running up to their bus stop every day. I think, you know, we really have to think about the timing of this for all of us trying to get out to go to work, as has already been mentioned. So I think, I see a lot, an awful lot of issues with this. I also have some concerns as one of the homeowners with a fence that's right there. Are we going to have like this tunnel of fences running down there for our fence and a few feet your fence? I mean, that's not aesthetically pleasing. It also becomes an issue with, you know, maintenance and, 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 you know, what we have to do to make, or everybody has to do to maintain that. I have, I have some issues about that too. I don't want your fence budding up to mine, but you know, just having like a few feet between the fences just kind of create like this tunnel effect right through there. And how well will that be maintained? It's not going to be inside your fence where, you know, if I have the, the landscape and everything going on. There's also, you know, another issue, we have dogs that we let out in our yard because, you know, they like to play in the yard. So now they're constantly going to be hearing these kids that's going to get them excited and, and leave them barking. It's just going to create quite a company in the neighborhood when the kids are out playing. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Julie Drake. Most of the valid, most of the points have already been made, but one thing I did want to add is, again, kind of goes back to the parking situation. I know that daycare centers often have special events, whether it's a Halloween parade, a Christmas parade, a play inside the school that, you know, classroom where our grade level is doing. There's not going to be enough parking spaces and there's to accommodate the parents for such a thing or the grandparents that are coming to that. And there's really no overflow that doesn't require people to walk across Sulphur Springs, which is, you know, three lanes of traffic and it's right near an intersection and already congested. It's just another not safe situation. That would also mean that potentially some of those overflow cars would be parking on Arbor Springs Drive. And, you know, we don't, we don't really want that. We don't want a bunch of parking on our street.
Okay, thank you. Mel, you got anybody else?
These have all been from the same.
Subdivision, Paul Novak, just to sort of sum up what we all just said. Right now, the traffic situation on our little street is, is, is really bad as it is today.
I'm sorry, who's speaking right now?
There would make it almost intolerable and probably unsafe. So I want the county to consider that as they, they think through this, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that everyone from that location?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay.
Mel, we've lost your.
Oh, sorry, I think I muted myself. Marla Brunk is next, Marla, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm Marla Brunk, I'm the owner of the Goddard School across the street. And I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and I can also provide a little bit of clarification also. It's a one to four ratio for any child who's under two years old. It's a one to eight ratio for any child who's two years old. And it's a one to 10 ratio for any child who's three years old and older. If they have seven classrooms and there's showing the number of children in each of the classrooms that I'm seeing here on the drawing, they are definitely going to need about 21 teachers at one time. And it doesn't count any floater breakers or anybody in the office answering the phone. So 22 parking spots is a lot fewer parking spots than what we opened with at Goddard. And we were only licensed originally for 138 kids initially, before we put our addition on the back of the building that just opened this year. So the number of parking spots, I would think would be too few for this number of children that would be there for peak occupancy. We also have a large turnaround circular driveway at Goddard for filtering our families through. With two curb cuts, you know, one on Arbor and one on Sulphur Springs. The one on Sulphur Springs does open right into a turn lane. So the flow of traffic, if you are mainly using Arbor Springs, it's a very short amount of space between Big Bend and that curb cut. They probably will have to stage people coming, they probably have to turn around on Arbor Springs in order to come through there. Agreed, there's only about a two hour window of busy traffic in the mornings and in the afternoons, even for my facility. But you're right, people go to work and get off about the same times. We do have special events at all childcare centers. Crossing over to use the overflow area of the strip mall across the street at Treetop, I think would be difficult with the amount of traffic that we see on Sulphur Springs. We were also required to have a water detention basin when we built our property across the street. And when we put the addition on, if even larger, I don't see a water detention requirement on this plan. I see that the ground does, you know, fall off to the one side. But there is a pretty large requirement because of the amount of water that's displaced by this large of a building and its parking lot that's non-permeable for water. And I don't know if anyone has looked at the calculations for that for this building and its parking lots. And then as far as pedestrians, we also have pedestrians that come and go across the front of our building as well on our sidewalk. It has not been as big of a deal. Sometimes we do have to watch when school lets out because the kids that go to and from the Sonic there. But I would think also in the mornings when they're having bus kids getting on and off, I can see why that might be an issue if you have cars coming and going from a facility that's on that side of the street. So that's the conclusion of everything I wanted to ask about or make points about was the ratios and water detention and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be Chris Conway. Chris, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, this is Linda Conway, and I wanted to concur on the, on the traffic flow. I will tell you that on, in the morning, the, the turn lane to go east on Big Bend, there is times where it literally backs up past the Goddard School. You know, almost to the next subdivision up there that's behind us, which also has a childcare at the Lutheran School. And, and so that would be a problem. Yes, the U-turn is, is all the time on the end of our street. People will come in and you don't know when you're coming down the street, whether they're going to come straight or they're going to do a U-turn right in front of you. So that is creates a hazard. Parking on our street is already very difficult because when McBride built these homes, they, they didn't do a very good job on the front of the houses. And so we barely have enough room to park our cars on the street to even let the mailman get to his, get to the mailbox to deliver the mail. Most cars have to block a partial of the driveway that it's in front of. So, you know, in the evening, that definitely will be an issue if there's cars that have to park on our street for events. And then I also concur with the water retention. I have a very big concern about that because right now there is a water retention that backs up behind the shop, the gas station there, and that's where our house overlooks. And there is, when we have solid, solid rains, that water retention fills up quite fast and quite quickly. So if you throw this on top of it, it's going to, you know, probably come, you know, higher than it should be, you know, potentially into our yard. So I, you know, definitely have a concern about that. I concur with Paul's request on the fencing because, you know, we will be looking at the 20 foot wall with the fencing. My husband and I both work from home. And so, you know, the additional noise factor from the kids, it's going to, you know, come into play along with the dogs barking, which is already a factor without the children back there. And then finally, I'm not, I'm very concerned about the, the landscaping plan because what I can see down towards our end of the, our, behind our house, there's plans for Evergreen. And I already have a house next door to me that has an Evergreen that is pitching Evergreen pine needles and everything into my yard. It is, I do not need another pine needle, you know, Evergreen tree that's going to just provide additional stuff for me to clean up. So those are my concerns. The traffic flow is number one immense and for us here on Arbor Springs Drive and Court at all times. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next will be Chris and Becca White. Chris or Becca, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hello, thank you. We reside at 1110 Arbor Springs Court. So we are the, on your little plat right there, we are the property lines that are on the west side, just north of the latitude latitude of that west boundary. So we will be basically right in the middle of that, that playground right there. So again, we've got the retaining wall height. We, we have a lot of drop off from the north to the south of our eastern boundary. So the retaining wall, the fence on top of the retaining wall, the 20 foot building on top of all of that, which has already been discussed. Arbor Springs and Arbor Springs Court are both very narrow streets, which has already been discussed. One thing that hasn't been discussed, I guess, is that, it kind of was, I guess, we are a double cul-de-sac neighborhood. It is our only access to Sulphur Springs. The only access. So again, if you get cars backed up and a bus comes in, nobody's getting in and out. That's not ideal. Specifically, what I want to really address is the access to Sulphur Springs itself. The gas station, which is just to the south, has an, an entrance slash exit just to the south of the one proposed here that immediately runs into the median divider, the, the curb right there. It is posted no left turn. A county officer or Baldwin Police, Manchester Police, somebody needs to sit there and write tickets all day long. People turn left there all the time. People turn right out of the Sonic just across the street when it's posted no, or I'm sorry, they turn left when it's posted no left there as well. So now you put an exit entrance just what? 100 feet, if that, to the north? And you're going to have traffic crossing each other. People enter that turning lane southbound on Sulphur Springs to go east on Big Bend all day long. I've seen five school buses lined up at that light before pass the entrance to our subdivision. This is a traffic nightmare waiting to happen. It will result in accidents, which involve young children. And I'm pretty sure the county doesn't want that. We don't want that for our neighborhood, we don't want that for anybody. But there needs to be a lot more planning around the entrance and exit of this facility, not to mention the parking and every other issue that's been brought up. Thank you.
Okay.
That appears to be all the speakers.
Okay. Petitioner, can you shed any light on some of the questions?
Sure.
Was one first issue, I believe.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you all for taking the time to come and express your concerns. First of all, we have no interest in not being a great neighbor to the community. So happy to, to begin to address, you know, any and all of the concerns that were raised today. So let's, let's talk about lighting, because that was the one you asked me first. This is actually the lighting plan. It's, it's hard to read if you've not ever seen one, but effectively the, the numbers represent the, the lumens. And so someone who was concerned about the, the west side of the property, there will be no lighting in, in the rear of the property. All those you see the zeros. And the intent is to make sure that you don't have light coming off of your property. So you can see that there are effectively lights that light up the parking lot. There'll be a light that will light up the entrance, but past that, there is not lighting that will be leaving our property. So let's go back. I'm on the landscaping plan. Look, happy to address adjusting as necessary the landscaping on this west side. I did want to clarify that the, the fence distance from the property line is 30 feet. So this is not right up against, not right up against the, the nearby property line. And happy to address if, if we need to be changing some of this landscaping to a different type. I believe what we're trying to do is follow the suggested code, but I, I, I'm not opposed to changing these. We're not, we're not married to, you know, a, a pine or anything like that. I, I, I'm not opposed to changing these. We're not, we're not married to, you know, a, a pine or anything like that. Um, what else? We, we talked about, uh, so I believe I, say what?
The food deliveries.
Yep. So again, those will happen middle of the day. The facility's only, only open from seven to six. So, um, we would not be getting deliveries. Most likely, because again, this is catered in day of, that the food's not stored on site other than, you know, light snacks. Um, so we're talking about, um, you know, um, only, the, the, most of the food will be coming at, you know, between 10 and 11, uh, for lunchtime. So that's not, uh, I, I don't believe that will be impactful to some of these morning or evening. Um, we'll talk about the fencing as well. The fencing will be an aluminum fence, uh, that's very, very similar to the Goddard, uh, right across the street, uh, which is a dark aluminum with, uh, a reasonable spacing. Uh, it has to be, you know, tight enough that a kid can't get out, of course. Uh, but we have no, no interest in creating a, a wall of, um, you know, wall of fence to kind of create ourselves in. Um, a couple of the other questions or, or, or comments that, uh, I'd like to address. Uh, yes, would, there will be a, a retaining wall here. The, the retaining wall is right here. And that's just due to the nature of the site, like the, look, I don't want to do it any more than anybody else wants this here. It's the only way you can have a, a, a safe and ADA, uh, playground. Uh, it's not possible to do it without it. You know, unfortunately, we're going to do our best to, to shade that or, or shield it with landscaping, uh, and, and trees. But the, just the nature of how much the site drops from one portion to the next, um, is really, it, it's really difficult to avoid that. There was a comment that we don't have, uh, retention. We do, it's just to the east of, uh, east of our, our east parking. Uh, well, a couple of other questions. There were, um, there were comments about, let's see, the height. I can go to that if people would like, um, height of the building.
Go over the water one more time, the water retention runoff, strong water detention.
Yep. Yeah, maybe I can, I'm gonna kind of create a square. The detention would be this area right here. That's correct. See the dark black, um, box. So that is the retention. What other ones? Uh, so the, the teacher, the, or the, uh, owner or the director of the Goddard School is correct. Uh, again, I, I was going off memory on the number of teachers, but it, that is all dictated by the state. Um, and it's dependent on the age group. So, um, the three to six year olds, which is these children's house, those will have two teachers. So there's four classes, so there's eight of those. Um, and then we will have two teachers for the toddler rooms. Well, the reason we have that was there, uh, I think two year old classrooms, so they have half as many students, um, but they also have two teachers, so 14, uh, 14 teachers, not the 12. We do not have a, uh, receptionist. Um, and the food that gets prepped is by one of the teachers that pulls off. Um, so don't know if I addressed anything else. Uh, they are correct. The height of the, the height of, uh, the, to the roof is 20 feet. Uh, and I guess that is quite in line with what, what, you know, the most of the houses nearby are going to be as well. Also, I don't view that as anything that's, uh, out of the ordinary. Uh, it's a traditional pitched roof, uh, and, you know, nine foot ceilings on the inside.
The traffic was a underwriting issue all the way around. I don't know what you can do about that.
Yeah, but happy to talk about that. Uh, again, uh, we don't have, I guess, there are some common misconceptions about, uh, about a daycare. We don't have buses, right? We also, uh, typically, uh, again, I was, uh, we, we do have someone from higher ground on here. If, uh, if it's appropriate to allow him to address that, or if that's, uh, possible, is that possible?
Sure. Let, let me say one other item. It might be easier if you did have buses rather than all the vehicles. If you had two or three buses versus 25 or 30 automobiles, that, that's a big difference.
Uh, understood, um.
And I know you can't have buses with toddlers and two year olds and so forth.
Yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, they can't, they can't be picked up and, you know, the kids and babies in car seats and all the things. Uh, so that, it's unfortunate that wouldn't be a solution. So, um, Alon.
May I ask a question, please?
Yeah, Bill.
Uh, the special events and programs, traditionally, how many of those do you have?
Yeah, so let's address that because it's a, it's another question. We don't have campus-wide special events for the concerns that people are specifically addressing, right? Because it wouldn't be possible to do. We don't have the parking available. So what they would do is you would do a classroom at a time, uh, on an evening. So, so you would do, uh, the two year old classroom A at 6:00 PM. And then two year old classroom B at 7:00 PM on Monday. And then you'd Tuesday, you'd have to, if you do like a Christmas program, it takes kind of the whole week to do it because you can't, you cannot have a special event with, we just don't have the parking. So it's not, it's not possible to do that and so we can't schedule it. We would not be wanting or asking for our parents to park in a Sonic or, you know, the dry cleaner. That's just not safe.
Okay, and I think I mentioned, uh, about two lights, uh, that'll be shining 24 hours.
Yeah, so we're gonna follow code, but again, I'll go back to that. Um, the only lighting that we would have is, is in the parking lot. Um, as you can see, all the zeros, there's no, there's no lighting here, anywhere in the west. Uh, the only lighting, um, that we have is in the actual parking lot and it does not bleed off the property. Um, this is a, this is a study that's required by the planning commission, uh, the planning department for us to provide them so that they can understand that we're not doing exactly what the concern of the resident was.
Okay, the other one was, uh, trash pickup and delivery of supplies.
Yep. So again, trash pickup, we, we, we will have a, uh, a trash enclosure. Uh, it, it will be enclosed, right? So people will not, uh, be viewing our dumpsters, uh, or anything like that. Uh, we, we will have food waste, but it will be, you know, put in the trash can, no different than anybody else's, uh, with a lid. So you will not be smelling it. Um, and, and deliveries, again, it's only, it's only food delivery, uh, typically happens between 10 and 11.
Are these kids potty trained?
Uh, unfortunately, they are not, uh, but.
So work for that truck to go into those trash containers also?
Well, correct, but you, you have to put those in, in bags, uh, so that you don't stink up the, stink it all up. I mean, they do that in the room. Otherwise, the, the room won't even be able, you can't be in the room, right?
I'm just, what, some of the concerns I thought I heard.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it's certainly a concern and we can't, we, we wouldn't be able to run a school, uh, with that, so.
Okay, anything else? Petitioners, anyone?
So. Yeah, you were gonna address the traffic and then you got.
Yeah, yeah. Again, Alon, uh, if, if someone can unmute Alon Walsh.
Okay.
He's on here. Uh, Alon, one of the directors for, uh, Higher Ground, he can answer this probably better than, better than I.
Alon, you are unmuted now.
Hi there, uh, Alon Walsh, uh, VP of Construction and Real Estate Development for Higher Ground Education. I do have a video. It's not on, I apologize. I don't know why, uh, if it's an option or something, I could be on video. I'm not trying to hide, but anyway, uh, yeah, I mean, we, you know, our program runs from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Um, we do not charge extra for before and after care. Uh, we have over 91 locations at this point. They're all, we own all of our, uh, businesses. We do not, it's not a franchise. Um, and so we have, uh, a system called Smart Care where we track when, uh, families check in and check out their students. It's all electronic and we just have overwhelming amount of data that shows us that, uh, families really do, uh, drop off in, it's kind of, um, it's definitely not all at once. It's a steady flow. Uh, typically, you know, the earliest would start at about 7:15 and then we see a steady flow all the way up through, uh, even after 9:00 PM or 9:00 AM in some cases. It just all depends on, uh, what the, what's convenient for the family. And then towards the end of sort of quote, "the workday" for the students, uh, at around three, uh, there'll be another kind of steady flow all the way up until 6:00 PM. And again, we don't, that's just part of the generated rates. Uh, we don't want families rushing to get there or rushing to pick up. And, yeah, so it's, it's, uh, we, we've had this discussion many, many, many times about, uh, you know, how we operate against compared to say a public school where there's cars lined up down the street and there's a big rush, uh, in the morning and a big rush in the afternoon. We're, we definitely don't see that. So that's, um, and then the other thing is that we have siblings quite a bit. So anywhere from 25 to, in some cases, 40%, it just depends. We don't know yet exactly, right? But, uh, obviously with a sibling situation would be, um, you know, two children for, for, for one car.
Yeah, I guess, but isn't all of that contention upon the area we're talking about? And, and if you're familiar with Sulphur Springs Road, Big Bend, Manchester Road, that's, that's a nightmare. Well, I, I, I live far from that area. That is a nightmare.
Well, the only thing I would say there is that we have, um, locations in urban areas, you know, New York City, Chicago. We have, uh, schools in very suburban locations and then everything in between. We have, uh, locations that have excess parking and we have numerous locations that have zero parking. Uh, and we have a lot of ways to, um, you know, make sure that we have no cars stacking. Uh, and as we have, uh, methods that we employ in numerous locations where we have staff that help children in and out of their vehicles, uh, in order to avoid situations like that. So we, we, we've pretty much seen it all and we, and we have, uh, a lot of measures to, to help there.
Well, in all due respect, I would have to say Chicago and New York is markedly different than Sulphur Springs, Big Bend and Manchester. They, you just accept bad traffic in New York. I mean, I don't even, I'm not even from New York, but if I went there, I would expect bad traffic in the inner city and, and all that. I would expect the same thing in Chicago. Um, Sulphur Springs, a lot of this is, is been foisted upon the people, the way that the communities evolved. And, uh, you know, we can't help that. They're there now. They have a double cul-de-sac. And I can understand their fear of people going in there and turning around and doing all that, uh, when you got one way in and one way out. I, I can understand that immeasurably. My subdivision I live in in Eureka is like that. It's got one way in, one way out. They have special events, uh, the cops come in, put signs up all up and down the street, no parking. Residents pull the signs up and park anyway. Um, it, it, traffic, I think, is gonna be your biggest hurdle on this.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, this concludes this hearing and, um, it's our last petition of the evening. Mel, you take a show of hands?
Sure. So when you leave the meeting, um, there will be a poll that appears, a little survey, asking you if you are in favor, if you are opposed or have concerns regarding all three of tonight's petition. Um, they're written by the petitioner name, but there's also a location, um, to help you discern between them. Um, if you need to send additional comment, you can send it to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov and it will be made part of the file as well.
All right, commissioners, thank you. Petitioners, thank you. And, and all participants, we, we appreciate your input. And we'll see everyone on the, uh, 22nd of November.
Correct. Thanks all.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.